Good evening, everybody. Today's Thursday, July 13th, the time is 6:00 p.m. We're here for the work session of the Capel City Council. This is our annual recurring budget workshop. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. First up is our citizens' appearance. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No.
So I'm going to forego the reading of all the government stuff, if that's okay with everybody. Before we get into the agenda, I would like to thank everybody for coming out. This is quite unusual to have this number of people here. We're overwhelmed, so thank you very much. We've got two basic items tonight. We're going to listen to a number of our service organizations' requests, and we're going to have a presentation from our finance department. Sorry for, I don't remember the new name. What's that?
Speak.
Strategic Financial.
Strategic Financial Group. We're going to listen to Kim talk, and on special revenue funds. So item number three on the agenda is the presentation discussion regarding our service organizations' requests. And first up is our Arts Council, and Janet Tidwell will be representing. Are you going to be talking about both the theater and corral, or how's that going to work?
I will be asking representatives of the theater and corral to come up and join me.
So we get to meet more?
Yes. We're a big group, and you're going to meet a few of us with me.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having us. Mayor and Council Janet Tidwell, I am the president of the Capel Arts Council, and thank you for giving us this opportunity this afternoon. Our mission, Capel Arts Council, we're a nonprofit organization. We were founded by Theater Capel, the Community Corral, and Capel Creatives, and our purpose is to foster the arts in our community. We are organized to exclusively promote, develop, and sustain the arts for the city of Capel. This includes organizing, fostering, and promoting civic, cultural, educational, and visual experiences and events for our citizens. Since our inception, we have also added on the Community Orchestra and the Ballet Ensemble of Texas to help form the resident companies that also support the Capel Arts Center. This is our board. The important thing to note from looking at this is we have residents from Capel Creatives, the Corral, the Orchestra, the Ballet Ensemble of Texas, and Theater Capel that all work together exclusively to promote the arts in our community. These are the resident companies. What's unique about the name Resident Companies is these are the five groups that facilitate community-based events in the Capel Arts Center. So this would be in addition to what the town and the Arts Center Foundation does. Each one of these groups is highly involved in ensuring that the Arts Center is successful. This year, our grant request is a little different than what you've seen before. Where in the past, we have individually submitted requests on behalf of each resident group. At your request, we have combined that request into one grant request on behalf of Capel Arts Council, and then we will be facilitating the distribution of those funds to the individual groups if those amounts are awarded. The grant request that we have is $27,000 for the public art that you see in the community. This number is the same as what you have seen in the past. It also helps with some of the exhibits that you see in the Arts Center and some of our overhead and operating expenses. Capel Community Corral is requesting $13,000, which is an increase of $4,000. That would cover adult and children's educational programs, concert archival, and add a new chamber group in that request. The Orchestra is requesting $13,500, which is a decrease of $4,500 from previous years, and this would cover four concert productions. And then Theater Capel is requesting $12,000, which is an increase from what you've seen in the grant request process. However, they have been funded money for those, to cover those items, just in a different avenue from the city. And that would cover equipment and material storage for programs. And the total of our request is $65,500. Okay? And I'm asking representatives from our group to get up and give you a little bit more information at your request, that would be the corral and the theater speaking about their programs. And first, I have John Wilson with the corral.
Greetings, John Wilson. I'm the vice president of the Capel Community Corral. I'm actually entering my sixth season with the corral, and my third time in a row presenting to this august body. So I will keep it as brief as possible. Our mission remains the same, to support and sustain and enrich the arts community and lead the arts community in Capel. Our goals are exactly as they have been for the past few years, to broaden the general audience, to increase our corral membership, and to provide learning opportunities. We've increased our membership from about 25 people that we had during the COVID year. Many of you may remember that we were one of the few arts communities, arts organizations in the state that performed all the way through the COVID emergencies. We performed in masks, we recorded a concert at 95 degrees in the Grove before the Arts Center was completed, but we felt that kept the choir, the core of the choir together, and since then, every year, we've seen an increase. We increased about 20 members in this past year from the previous season. A lot of what we do is based on the Capel 2040 directives, especially to celebrate the cultural growth and establish events that promote the arts in general. We have three distinct groups. We have the Large Corral. We had about 52 people onstage at our last performance. We have a select group that we call Variations. Variations is a smaller group, about 24 singers. This is the group that actively goes out and performs in the community. We do things for the chamber, we've done things for the Lions Club, we do things for the Arts Council, and we actually, is the outreach branch of what we do. And entering our fourth year, we have a Children's Corral. This is something that we found that there were children in Capel that couldn't fit vocal music into their extracurricular activities, so we have a Children's Corral, and it's been quite successful and continues to grow. We're also getting back to the community. This is the second year in a row that we've had a scholarship fund. Last, two years ago, we gave away one $500 scholarship, and last year, we gave two $500 scholarships. The scholarships are given to people who write essays about how choral music has affected their life. We're not looking for music majors, we're not looking for singers necessarily. We're looking for people that have some kind of representation, whether it's been something they learned at a younger age, and they just have to be active in the academic world to get the scholarship. We've had quite a few performances. I'm proud to say that last year, we started performing in October, and we had at least one performance of some kind from October until May. That includes what we did with Variations and with our Children's Corral, and so we keep quite active. So when May 24th came, we did our last show, a lot of us were happy to take a little bit of a break. This year, we have six shows planned, and there will always be more. We'll start out in October with what we call the Choir for All Ages. This has become a very unique and a very successful show. We will have singers onstage from the age of seven to 78 years old. So we will have the Children's Corral, we'll have a group from Capel High School, we'll have a group from Dallas Baptist College, and we'll have the oldsters, the Variations that will perform, and this was, this was very well received last year. I mentioned the Children's Chorus, they're quite active, and I'll show you a little bit more about something that we're very happy the city allowed us to do this last June. One of the things we're asking for new funds is a chamber choir. Now, as a choir, we actually determined that we want to sing more popular music. We want to sing music that people enjoy, we want to sing music that's entertaining. The chamber choir would be a different choir. The chamber choir would be more what we call high corral. A lot more a cappella, a lot more trained singers, and just a lot more what we call classical music. A smaller group, but think of it as you would like it, like a four or five-piece orchestra that has a chamber orchestra, not a full-fledged stage presentation. And again, going back to Capel 2040, I believe there's a spot on your bingo, so you get two points because I mentioned it twice, and the 2040 goals. Last summer, and we're doing this again this summer, this would be the third year we presented classes to the community. These are adult classes. Last year, in the middle, we actually wrote a book last year. We had four instructors that came and spoke for four Mondays in a row and taught the basics of music theory, music history, music performance. And this year, we'll be doing something a little bit different. We'll have four different directors, two of them have their doctorate locally, and they'll be teaching people in a workshop environment about how to be better singers. We believe that as we're able to offer the community these type of educational things that aren't really available to adults as much as they are to youngsters is very important, and the funds that the city has given us for the past two years make this possible. This is this year's, the Singing One-on-One is coming up the last Monday in July and the first Monday in August. And this year, we were able to do a week-long Children's Camp. We had 14 children, 18 children that came and spent the whole day at the Arts Center. They learned music, and on Friday, they presented a show. So they had big groups, small groups, they made some of their own costuming, they really had a good time, and what we found, a very diverse group. A lot of these children were not our regular corral kids, but knew people that found out about the program and were very happy to be involved in it. So I mentioned the summer workshops that are coming up. This year is coming up, and so we're asking for funding for next year. The Children's Camp, video production that we use in two ways. We no longer livestream, we actually have a YouTube channel. We record all of our shows, we put the shows on the YouTube channel. It's number one, a way for our singers to look at what they're doing. It's kind of hard to see yourself perform when you're onstage. It's also a recruitment tool. It works very well when we're finding people that are looking for choirs that may not be in the area and know our corral locally. And then, of course, I mentioned the Chamber Chorus that we're asking funding for. This is our typically, our typical proposed budget. For the most part, this choir is self-sufficient, this choir is self-sustaining. Our member dues and our ticket sales pay for the things that we do on a regular basis. The funding that we're asking for gives us a chance to do something extra without pinching the choir's budget or giving us a disinventitious position. So this is what we spend things for. Obviously, the biggest line item is our payroll. We have professional directors, we have professional companies, and we have to pay for that. I went through it kind of quickly, any questions?
Thanks, John.
I had a question.
Sure.
So, you know, what you guys have done for the community is really great, and I appreciate it. Especially, I did not realize you guys, you were giving out scholarships, which is fantastic. My question involves the funding of those scholarships. How do you designate or keep that separate from the funding that the city grants to you?
Well, we sell ads in our program. Frost Bank for the past two years have actually funded one of the scholarships. The second scholarship was funded from proceeds from the Choir for All Ages. We thought that was a good way, it's mostly youngsters. So those are not city funds, those funds will come out of our general fund. We earmark those proceeds from Frost every year and from the Choir for All Ages specifically for the scholarships.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. John?
That's our timing.
What's that?
Timing, because Theater Capel is.
Yeah, real quickly, I was going to ask the theaters.
We're fine. John has a question.
Can you go back on the slide? Am I here on it?
Yep. Yes.
Toward the, you show the breakdown of the, I guess, the budget?
So the next to last.
The revenue and.
Okay. So this one right here.
Yes. The money in, the ticket sales, is that just, I think you started that recently, right? Or it hasn't been that long?
No, we've always had ticket sales. Whenever we've had an audience, we've had ticket sales. That's something that we believe in. So the cost of our tickets vary from, like, at Christmas time, it's $10. Our most expensive ticket here today has been like $15. So we've always had ticket sales, and we look at ticket sales as a way to decrease the cost of our singers to be part of the choir. If we don't have that $14,000, we have to raise teams. We have, we don't have $14,000, we have to pay more for music. So we've been very happy. We've actually added a couple of paying shows, the Choir for All Ages, and the February show that we do that we used to do at the library, that's now a paying show, so.
And that's been pretty consistent as far as.
It's been pretty consistent. Me, you know. And we have one crucial. And you're always welcome to come. Any more questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
My name is Joanne Hill, and I am the second vice president, secretary for Theater Capel, representing Theater Capel. The reason I was asking about the timing is because we are doing our dress rehearsal tonight for Jan Frankenstein. So as you can see, these are all of our shows for this year. Theater Capel has been around for more than 35 years. Started long ago out of the Capel High School, and then over into the old fire station, and now we are in the beautiful Capel Arts Center. Seats, 120 people, so hopefully, each of you at least have been there or plan to be there, and Jan Frankenstein kicks off on Friday this week, but we do have dress rehearsal, and I am running the lights, so that's why I have to go. So, yeah. And on here, well, Janet had already mentioned what we were asking for, which is the $12,000 to cover our storage unit, which had been provided through the city for the past however many years that our founder, Mr. Wilson, who passed away last year, had worked with the city in order to get that, because that is a big part of keeping the costumes and everything ready and all the equipment for the show. So we bring in money via ticket sales and donations, but the storage unit is very, very key to our survival as part of all the shows that we do, and so that was not figured in. But then this year, we were asked to submit it as part of the overall Arts Council. So that's an additional $12,000 that we were going to ask for. But Theater Capel, we're all volunteer, of course. There are no paid members as part of our group. We do six shows, and that's 54 performances throughout the year, so we're always busy. So it's either we're doing a show, or we're doing rehearsal, or, and then back to the other show. This year, we also did a young actors workshop for students, first grade through sixth grade, so that was really successful. We had done those about 10 years ago in the old theater, but this year, we rebooted it, so that was really good. And then what I showed here is the number of hours that the volunteers put into putting on these quality shows for the city of Capel and surrounding areas. And what I did was break out based on the amount that a normal, the person would have been paid to do that, and you can see that amount there is pretty significant over $622,000. So we feel that what we're giving back as far as volunteer definitely can account for the $12,000 that we're asking for. This, and I know it's an eye chart, this is a list of all the shows that we have put on from 1980, and I think that's covering that a little bit, but for the past 35 years, and then you already saw all the shows that we're doing for this year, and we're already starting to look at, and we have come up with a pretty good list of the shows that we'll be doing for next year as well. This, we wanted to just show that we are getting noticed by different newspapers and articles, because these are some of the articles that were done to highlight our theater and what we've done over all of these years, and listed there are some of the comments from some of the volunteers, as well as just an overview of the, from our artistic director, Ms. Janice Wilson Arthur. And so just some of the things that, one of the volunteers that was there, I wanted to mention, she said that she had worked with every other, worked with a number of theaters in the past, but our theater just feels like family, so we try to keep it that way as well. And back to the actual budget, so that's, this is our budget that's listed here, but we do, of course, as I mentioned, individual ticket sales and season tickets are a big part of the money that we bring in, as well as donations, which we do get throughout the year. The annual musical, which is this one, we do a musical every year, and that, of course, is the one that incur the most cost because of you've got live, we've got live musicians during that, as well as all of the costumes and everything, but it comes out really, really, really well. We had a really great article that just came out today through the Colin Denton Chronicle, and he did a really great write-up on the show, so we're definitely getting noticed. Let's see, and I mentioned here that the fees for, the storage unit is for the costumes and props and some set build items, and the fees were previously paid out of the city budget, and so we're just asking for continued funding for those units. We actually have done some work, and we reduced the units from three units to two units, so we're asking for that. But the $12,000 is what it was last year, but then, of course, the cost increase every year for the unit. So we're estimating that that would be about $12,000 for two units, two larger units. We did a nice, you can read, council, you can read this later, but we came up with just some reasons that you should consider the funding request, because it is key to, an essential part of our theater, and we really thank you for your attention to that. And we'd like to thank you. Our board is, as I mentioned, who I am, and then we have the board members that are listed there as well, so there are nine of us. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Joanne?
She's up.
I know.
What is, sorry, go run my life.
He said, "You've got to go."
Yeah, I do. You guys are, by the way, you're welcome if you're out by 7:30. It's open to everybody.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Oliver, we appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. But we hope to see you there.
I'll be there soon.
Saturday.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Children's Advocacy Center, and Kristen Howell will be presenting. Good afternoon, and thanks for joining us.
Thank you, we're going to pull an audible. I am not Kristen Howell, and she is at another meeting. Hi there, I am Suzanne Woodard, who's, I run the Development Department at the Children's Advocacy Center for North Texas, and we just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. So for those of you that don't know much about the Children's Advocacy Center, we are the place that a child goes when they've made an outcry or someone has made an outcry on their behalf for physical or sexual abuse. You just heard from these amazing organizations that have great opportunities for kiddos, where they're fighting for these kiddos when they have been the victims of some of the most heinous crimes. So if a child makes an outcry, they come to our office. We are the ones that facilitate an investigation, we coordinate treatment for that kiddo, we help to collaborate with the DA's office, all of our MDT partners, law enforcement, the whole works, there's six, we have 67 partner agencies we work with. We sit around a table like this once a week, and every single case gets discussed, so nobody can drop the ball. You know, if somebody needs something from the Sheriff's Department, or if the Sheriff's Department needs something from the DA, we sit down at a table just like this, and nobody gets up until we're sure that the kiddo is going to be taken care of. So we start with justice, and then we move on to healing. We'll talk about mental health therapy services in a little bit. So we are one agency, three counties, four buildings. Some of you may recall, 26 years ago, we started off as the Children's Advocacy Center for Denton County. We had to change the name because now our service area also includes Wise and Jack. We have just over a million, a little over a million residents in that service area. Now, I say that, and I want you to hear what I'm saying, a million residents in that service area. Studies show, we know these facts are true. One in 10 children are abused, either physically or sexually, by the time they're 18. One in 10. And of those one in 10 that are abused, only one in 10 will tell. So you hear a million, you know, you've got to think, that's a lot of kiddos, and these kiddos are being abused. It does happen, it happens in every single community. And so we have been in Denton, Wise, and Jack now, like I said, Denton for 26 years, Wise and Jack, we've just recently added. But we have been partners with you guys for a long time. You've always been very supportive of the advocacy center. We try to play as big a part as we can in the cases that come out of your kiddos that live here, and so we appreciate you guys for being so supportive in that. Just a real snapshot into abuse, the crimes against children. It has no barriers, it is, it does not discriminate. It doesn't matter what your socioeconomic status is, or your gender, or your race. These people, they prey on children, and they believe children to be weak, and they're truly predators. We see most of the common characteristics of these perpetrators. They have access to a child, so they're a coach, they're a teacher, they're a parent or step-parent, a mom's boyfriend perhaps. They are pastors, they're, they're, anybody that has access to children will take an opportunity, the perpetrators will take an opportunity to groom these kiddos. Like I said, it's every socioeconomic level, it, you know, it doesn't matter if you have the biggest house in the neighborhood or you live in the smallest town in any of our three counties. It happens everywhere. The impact on these kiddos, it's a lifelong impact. As I just said, one in 10 kids get abused, one in 10 of those tell. Can y'all even imagine what the typical age of an outcry is? A child gets abused at eight years old. The typical age of an outcry for a child that has been abused is 52 years old. So think about that, they're carrying this story and this trauma. It's a lifelong impact on these kids. And once they do outcry, if they outcry, and we can get them into mental health, we can get them into therapy, we can get them on a path to healing, you know, they've still been carrying it with them their whole life. This will never go away, so it's a big impact. When a child presents with an outcry, we provide six core services to that kiddo. One is we coordinate the case, so that means, like I said, we sit around a big table, we talk about it, we discuss what's happening, we hold everybody accountable. Nothing can fall through the cracks. When these cases go to trial, everything has to be perfect, or that perpetrator can walk. Every T has to be crossed, every I has to be dotted, and so we really focus on that in the coordinated cases, making sure everything is done just as it should. The first step for a kiddo when they come in is they do a forensic interview at our office. We have trained forensic interviewers who are experts in child development and civil justice, criminal justice. They are trained to talk to these kiddos, they do not try to bait information out of them. They have these open conversations with them, they are highly trained to do just that. And because we were able to provide that, that kiddo has to tell their story once. They tell it in our office, it's on video, law enforcement, DA, Child Protective Services are watching on the other side of a mirror, and they have to tell the story once, and then they'll have to tell it again. So they're not being re-traumatized in police offices, or stations, they're not being re-traumatized in counselors' offices at school, they're not being asked to spill their guts about what this horrible thing was at home where maybe perpetrator is stepdad. So they get to do it one time in a safe, neutral, warm environment. Next is if they do need a medical exam, which all of our sexual assault cases get medical exams, we do that in-house. We have nurses on staff that are in the direction of a medical director. They, again, are highly skilled, very trained, to do just sexual assault examinations on children. And then we have family advocacy services. This is one of our biggest services, because we have family advocates that walk through this entire process with the kids. So when a family comes in, it's literally the worst day of their life. They have no idea what's happening. Maybe they got a call from school, from law enforcement that said, "Meet us at the Children's Advocacy Center." We have advocates that stick with them and walk them through every step of the process. That could be just ushering them along and telling them what to expect. It could be getting them rides in an Uber if they need to be somewhere. You know, we have a rainbow room where we can provide any kind of household item that kiddos might need if they're being removed, if their house is no longer a safe place because it's the scene of a crime. We provide all of it. And then lastly, but most importantly, we put these kids on a path to healing. We talked about how impactful it is and how it's a lifelong thing. Our goal is to get them on that path and to reduce the symptoms of trauma. We are the largest pediatric health, mental health provider in Denton County. We currently are sitting at about 13 therapists. We have 24 therapy rooms, and we see kids until nine o'clock at night, and we still have a waiting list of 109 kids that need to be seen. It's gut-wrenching, it's hard for us to come in and to hear this child has just had this horrible thing happen to them. We get them through the interview, we get them through the medical exam, and then we say, "Sorry, you have to wait six weeks now to talk about this and to make this better." So that's very frustrating for us. As you all know, I'm sure, access to mental health care right now is difficult at all levels, but these kids are really suffering because we're not able to give them all the mental health services they need. Total number of clients, so last year, we saw 5,616 children and families walk through our doors. Okay, this is Q, want to take this from you? I'm going to let Kate talk. Kate's our numbers guru, so we're going to kind of go off of this, but I do just want to reiterate that, you know, we are very happy to be working with Capel. We understand that you can go to, children can either go to the Tarrant County, Children's Advocacy Center, or us, we are very proud. A lot of times that you come to us, our services are top-notch. I want to also mention that our children and our families are never charged a dime. They should not have to pay because they were victims of a crime. That's just not the way it is. So we do not charge for any of our services. So we do not charge for any of our services, and that's important to us. Those kids don't deserve that.
So as Suzanne said, I'm Kate Linus and I'm the Grants Manager for Children's Advocacy Center, and that's why I know the numbers and I know what to ask for. So what, this chart, and I'm gonna kind of rush through some of our numbers. It's all available for City Council if you want, but I did wanna make sure that you had it available. We read every statewide intake report of child abuse for our three counties, and for the last two years, that has been almost 9,000. One in 10 will be abused. One in 10, of those one in 10 will make an outcry. So that's why that 9,000 is those who have made an outcry. Not all of them reach criminal levels, and that's why the number of those that met criteria are significant less, significantly less. So it's about 2,400. Actually, that matches up to if you figure just, you know, 250,000 kids, one in 10 is making an outcry. So that's the 2,400. So the numbers actually do match up. We don't like that, but it happens. The number of forensic interviews, those kids who actually come in as part of an investigation, it's not 2,400. And that's because a number of different things have to occur. The investigators have to investigate it. We do not investigate it at the center. That's the police department or that CPS. And because of changes in laws and changes in how everything is done, there's been some changes in whether a case is brought to us for coordination or is investigated in the field or something else is happening. Also, families might move. So the abuse might have happened and the report might have occurred in our service area, but the family might move, or they choose not to cooperate. And that's a choice. They make the choice whether or not they're going to be interviewed, whether they're not gonna participate. We do know, however, that if kids come through our doors and they're assigned to mental health, to a family advocate, that we are going to help them. And this is particularly true with when they're assigned to a therapist and those who actually get in and see and complete their therapy sessions. And we average about 10 therapy sessions for each child. When they attend all of this, when they participate, we almost guarantee that they're gonna have at least eight, 70% of our kids are gonna have a reduction in their trauma symptoms. This is an old figure. Sorry, we got updates, and it's now at 78% because we just got to analyze the six months. And so we're at 78%. That's unheard of for the state, but that's because our clinicians are that good, working with our clients who want to come in. We can only do that when we have the funds to pay everybody. So this is where that comes in. The number of kids coming from Capel, doesn't seem that much, right? If you figure that we have 2,400 cases, we had 1,200 interviews. In 2020, we had eight. In 2021, we had 11. And in 2022, we had 16, but we offered those 16, 145 services.
So I'm gonna say something real quick about this number. It goes up, and most people would look at it and say, we don't want that number going up. That's such tragic, terrible number. We don't want that many kids getting abused. No, we want this number going up because we know kids are getting to be abused no matter what. This is how many we can capture and we can help. So we know we can never prevent child abuse. We know we can never eradicate it. There will always be evil, but the quicker we get to a kid and we can break that cycle, we find a lot of times that abuse is a generational cycle. If we can break that cycle with a kiddo, so we want our numbers to go up. We want these numbers to get higher and higher because it means we're able to help our kids.
Yeah, and you'll also see the total number of children that the center helped. Almost 2,500 in 2020, well over 3,000 in 2021. Gee, I wonder what was happening in 2021? And yet, in 2022, our numbers have not decreased. We are not pre-COVID numbers. That's partly because of population growth, but that's also because we're training people better to be able to report, to recognize and report, and we're training the law enforcement and CPS who are working these cases to bring them to us as part of an open investigation. And that's really important. The total number of services is also important because generally, we ask for assistance and payment for those specific services. This is a lot of information. I'm sorry, I hate these kinds, but it happens. We're mandated by Texas Family Code to provide our services, but we are an underfunded mandate. We get about 42% of our budget, our $7.3 million budget from state and federal funds. Then we have to be competitive for the rest of our funding. That's coming from individuals, that's coming from sponsorships and special events, but it's also coming from a lot of the cities. Our competitive grants are for us for competitive dollars in order to be able to provide all these services. It costs us. Remember, all these are free services. The family, the child, does not pay for any of these services. We calculate our cost at about 2780 per child. That's an average cost. We're looking at 10 therapy sessions, one forensic interview, and the cost for family advocacy for victim services for a family. So that's about 2780. However, that does not include the cost of all of our case review, of all of our staffing, and certainly doesn't include our salaries. It doesn't include anything else. This is strictly for what it would take to provide those services. So this year's request is for $8,896. That's 20% of the total cost to offer all the services we did in 2022. That's not the 2023 numbers. That's the 2022 numbers. And we do that because we can provide data that supports, this is how many of Capel residents came to us and received services, children, zero to 17. So we include all Capel residents.
We commit to raising that 80%. That's our commitment to these kiddos. We do that, like Kate said, through several different, different ways. We just are asking that each of the communities do what we generally call their fair share, which is 20% of the cost for each of these children.
And we have a lot of different zip codes, but it's predominant, our kids predominantly come from the southern part of Denton County. Gee, where does most of the population of our three counties live? The southern part of Denton County, so that's why it's Capel. Also, our fiscal year is different than a city's fiscal year. We run January to December, and our last audit, that has been approved by the board, was in 2021. We're still waiting for the final numbers and the final approval of 2022. I'm anxiously waiting that so I can update this. And we also have a lot of op cycle. But we have public grants, and the public grants change. It depends on what the fiscal year is for those. What we guarantee to provide to Capel residents is that we will conduct their forensic interviews. We will provide all their family advocacy services. We will provide all of their mental health services. We will provide all of those other wraparound services. We will assist the police department as they investigate so that the city of Capel does not have to come up with an additional $45,000, $50,000 in training and housing and to get all of those clients taken care of and receive the best care. Because our ultimate aim, the reason why we do all this, is to make sure that child has the chance to reach that child's full potential. We just want them to be the kid they're supposed to be. So that's it. You guys have any questions, Ms.?
Yeah, I do. Susan, you were talking about the forensic interviews, and I was curious if those are admissible in court.
Absolutely. That's what they're, they begin the investigation, that they are admissible in court. Also, our forensic interviewer generally testifies in the case. The only two people in our office, providers in our office that can testify in court are the forensic interviewer and the same nurse. Because the same nurse is a medical provider, or anything that is sent to the same nurse is considered an additional outcry, and that's allowed in court as well.
I do want to also clarify that when a child goes into court, they have to make their statement in court. They have to be present in court. That's the state of Texas. That's most states in the United States where they have to be present in court. So all the other times of needing to have that story, needing to understand exactly what took place, that the investigators can get from the video and from the audio.
So that was gonna be my next question, so you already covered it. I find it unfortunate that a minor child has to be present in court for a case like that.
They have to literally be across the room from the perpetrator. Yeah. And there is no age limit on that, as long as the child is verbal. But I'll tell you right now, we have a horrible, a horrible situation in that court cases are taking so long. And COVID, of course, set everything back. The backlog just kept growing and growing and growing. We had a case the other day that finally went to court. It was 10 years old. The child was four when it happened, and at 14, she was having to get up there and testify and re-traumatize and tell this story. So, you know, it's, we stay with them through that whole process. We get them ready for court, we prepare for what to expect, we do what the best we can, but it's taking a long time to get these cases to court.
So we're, I'm gonna move on. So I had one other question for Kate. At 2870, $2,780 per child, we receive services on the equivalent of around $46,000 from you. You're only asking for just under 9,000, that 20%. That seems to be a good deal for us.
It's an excellent deal for you. Would you like to pay that entire $46,000? That makes my life easier.
Well, my, my real question was, is that, how are the other cities that, how are your other partner cities doing in that area?
No, isn't that a great question? I'm gonna throw some of them under the bus, that they don't pay it. Just up, they do not pay their 20%. And then other cities...
So the, I'm, I know the mayors of the other cities, I'll be happy to talk to them.
I'm going to reach out to you and we're going to send that because what we do every year is we, we prepare, this is months-long preparation to do this, our fair share. And we call it a fair share because we want to make sure that each of the municipalities and the counties understand what we are taking on, 80% of the cost. And all we're asking to assist your police department, to assist everything else that has to take place within your city for your residents, is that 20%. And we send the list. This is every city we assist, the number of children that we have assisted the prior year, the number of services. So it's 27, 29 children and 25,000, or 25,000 and something services, the amount of money it costs us, it was 6.9 in '22, and then the 20% cost. And there are, out of, okay, there's 50, there's 54 cities in Denton County. Yeah, municipalities in Denton County. I would say at least 15 to 20 zip nothing. So I will contact you.
Actually, you know what, Mayor? I wanna throw this in, though. We don't want the cities to take the whole run. We don't want you, because it is vitally important that we have community buy-in to our mission. It's so important. So we want for the community to have a response to what we're doing.
Thank you. Bijou, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your advocacy for the kids. My question is, the 16 kids conducted you from Capel, are they from Dallas County, Denton County, or combined?
They're both. The relationships we have with different, with our different partners, if a child, and it, it gets a little complex. If the assault, the crime happened in Denton County, but the child lives in Dallas County, you know, it, it, the lines can get real fuzzy. So usually, whoever we have a better relationship for, with, as far as the, the city, if they have a better relationship with us or they're used to us, they'll come to us. So these are, these are all the kids that we've seen. Some may be in Dallas County, others in Denton County.
And then next number, you had 145 encounters or engagement. Can you explain what that is?
That would be all six of our services. So that would be a forensic interview, case coordination, a case review, the forensic medical exam that once took place, all of the family advocacy assistance that would have occurred. So that could be transportation costs, it could just be the family advocate sitting there and making the phone calls, and it would be any and all mental health services. So, and often, it's not just the client, but it's also the family member, the caregiver that might have some of that session as well.
We also provide educations to all the schools. We're in schools doing, we, how many students have we already?
Over 8,000.
We've already been in front of 8,000 students this year, providing basic body safety. We do, we have programs from everyone from, you know, the little kids all the way up through high school and personal space and dating and consent. I mean, we do the whole gamut. That's all free charge to you. That's something we provide to your community.
And it's not part of those numbers, the 16 and the 145.
What's your contact information?
Well, I can leave that with you.
If you look at us on the web, cacnorthTexas.org, and follow us on social media.
Any other questions, counsel? Well, thank you very much, ladies, for your presentation. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your continued partnership. I really need a lot to ask.
All right. Moving on, item C is CCA, Christian Community Action. Mr. Gilbert Montez is here with us.
Mr. Mayor and City Council staff, it's good to be with you. Once again, we were here just a few weeks ago. You honored us with a proclamation in honor of our 50th year of service to our communities. And thank you for that and thank you for this time tonight. As I mentioned, we are celebrating our 50th year and we, our CCA for those years has been alleviating suffering, bringing hope and changing lives to families. That's our mission statement. And we have been providing those services to families, and they range from rescue to relief to restoration. I'll explain that in a few minutes, but those are the three main buckets, three main phases of our different programs and different services that we offer. We are assisting more than 10,000 individuals every year. In 2022, on a monthly basis, we averaged a distribution of $148,000 every month for families for financial aid, for rent and utilities. That doesn't count the cost of weekly groceries. Our Client Choice Pantry is seeing right now nearly 800 families every week. We're open Monday through Friday, our pantry is, and we're seeing about eight, about 770 families last month went through our pantry on a weekly basis for groceries. But for 50 years, the organization has had a great legacy of providing these services and bringing hope and changing lives to families. Last year, CCA Family Assistance helped almost 4,400 individuals for crisis relief. This is a map of our service area. They're defined, our service area is defined by our, by eight different school districts. And of course, that includes Capel, but as you can see, it expands all the way from Northwest ISD all the way east to Frisco ISD and all those school districts in between. I should mention that we are, our Board of Directors consist of 11 members, and our Board Chair last year and this year is a Capel native, or Capel resident, rather, Attorney David Apples. Some of you may know David, and he has been serving our, our Board very well. Here's the first bucket of services that I mentioned, our rescue services. This is our crisis management services, and most of our families come in for these services. This is what gets their attention. They're either having eviction notice or they have a cutoff notice from the utility and they need help. And so this includes the pantry that I mentioned, the pantry services. And in 20, in, our pantry is one of the few Client Choice Pantries in Denton County that is open Monday through Friday. We have a morning appointments for our families, Monday through Friday, and then evening appointments also for, for our families. And as I mentioned, we're seeing nearly 800 families right now. This is the second area of services for, for our families, our relief services. They, they help support the most vulnerable members of our population, children and senior adults. We have three, the first three listed there are our children's programs, our Back to School, our Christmas program, and then our Kids Eat Free, which is a summer feeding program. We're right in the middle of doing that program right now. And then our senior adults, we call them our Golden Angels. That's, we have about 140 who gather at our place on Monday, and we dedicate our Monday mornings to providing them a program and allowing them to shop in the pantry, kind of free time that they don't have to, they can take their time shopping for their groceries. Our restorative services, this is the area where, during the pandemic, where we had to shut down. This is our classes. This is the area where we feel really makes a difference in the lives of our families and individuals. This is where we provide classes such as ESL and GED classes, computer literacy classes, financial budgeting. We have teamed up with several community... We have teamed up with several community partners to provide workshops like how to buy your first home or how to create your own business. And so this is where we, we take a deeper dive into the life of family. We help them set goals. Our case managers meet with them on a regular basis with these families to target these goals and to help them achieve them. And those goals may be as simple as a single mom just recently wanted to be able to have $2,500 in her, in her savings account. And we celebrated that fact. Or it could be as much as a 50-year-old man who came to us several months ago. He'd been homeless for five years. Came to us and within months, we were able to find an apartment for him, able to get a grant that paid his apartment fees for several months. And in the meantime, we're helping him get back on his feet, helping him find a job, helping him with interviews so that he can be on his own. This is the area where we are rebuilding after the pandemic. We had to shut it down during the pandemic. We're rebuilding it. And this is the area that makes a huge difference in the lives of people. Our major accomplishments, I just listed some of these. First of all, those enrichment classes that I mentioned are up and running again. We, we dabbled into it last year some, and we did a better job in the spring semester. And we're looking forward to the fall semester, but we'll do much more. We mentioned homeless population. In the year and a half that we've had a grant targeting help for homeless families, we have been able to house 55 previously homeless families. These are families who were living in their car or living behind buildings. And 37 of them, of those families right now are in what we call case management. We're working with them to help, help them improve themselves. I mentioned the partnerships that we have. Truist Bank is one of them. They help lead one of our budgeting in a crisis class and a first-time homebuyer class as well. We're working, some of our clients need help with immigration issues. We're partnering with opening doors in order to do that, as well as with Texas Workforce Commission for jobs that our families and individuals need. Our request, last year of the, of the number of families that we were able to help, 60 of those families, 60, rather, 60 of those individuals representing 38 families came from Cappell. And so our funding request is for $20,000. And what we provided those families with was everything from rent assistance, utility assistance, back-to-school supplies for their kids, the children, as well as some of the classes, they participated in some of the classes that we offer. Besides the actual services that I mentioned, sometimes our families come in and what they really need is support. They need someone to encourage them, someone to, really to love them. And those are the intangibles that our, our frontline team really works to do. And so we try to look at the person as a whole individual and try to provide not only the financial aid, not only the classes that they're in, but also we take into account that they're whole individuals and they need that love and support. And I think that's really what CCA has been about for many, many years. We don't do it alone. We have a long list of community partners that we have worked with over the years, cities and organizations throughout Denton County and in this area that have been a part of how we help people. So thank you for, for your time. Thank you for the continued support that Cappell has lent us. And we really appreciate it. So I'll entertain any questions.
Council, any questions for Gilbert? John?
Yes, sir.
Well, the people that comes into the door, comes in the door that are not seeking help, what percentage do you actually accept? And what percentage do you actually turn away? And for what reasons?
The numbers, the percentage of numbers that we help is about 80 to an 80, varies between 80 and 85, depending on, we look at those on a monthly basis. And sometimes they don't, they have to qualify financially. And we let them know that ahead of time. And then they have to bring in certain documentation. For instance, if they're needing help for, for rent assistance, then they need to bring in certain documents from their landlord, from their landlord. And so some of them, it's as simple as not providing us with the correct documentation. And so we, we try to encourage them. We let them know ahead of time when they call, we let them know what documentation we need. And so, but there's a variety of different reasons why they, they might not qualify. And it may range everything from their over in their salary. And we use government regulations for that, government numbers for that. So it may be that. And maybe, we had one individual whose apartment complex owner refused to provide us, we needed W-9 from them. And they just refused to provide us that. And we did everything we could to try to help that. I made a call to the apartment complex, my caseworker did, several of us did. And we could not get them help. But it varies every month. Every family is different. And that's why I mentioned that last slide. We try to meet families where they're at as much as we can.
Council, any other questions? Thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate what you do for our community and we value the relationship.
Yeah, we do too, very much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item D is the Cappell Historical Museum. It's Chris Long. Now, this is a video presentation, but I sent you live here in person?
I did. I knew you'd want me to come. Thank you to the council for having my live. A couple remarks and then we'll go to the video. The museum was founded late 2022. At the time it was formed, the society had one event in Old Town, which was Pioneer Day. The Cappell Historical Museum is now a standalone 501(c)(3). It is being set up so that it will continue perpetually and not just if it's under. Thank you, Councilman, for telling me I should consider that. And so we're very proud of the last nine months that we've had. And we have a video to show you what the last nine months have looked like in Old Town. I know we're all kind of looking at Old Town to see what's going on. The person who did the video is Alyssa Gray. She's our intern year-round and Alyssa is here. And she did an amazing video. So if we could start the video, that'd be great. Am I supposed to start the video? Because we're going to be in trouble. Thank you, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not a good audio person. The city's not saying anything.
Tech support to the rest.
He's running.
There he is.
And had help that you have, it would have been really nice if one had spell-checked it. I had looked at it, but we missed a couple words. So when you get to writer or a V E R, pretend it's writer.
Hi there, my name is Alyssa Gray. I'm 15 years old and am a rising sophomore of her high school. And I've been with the Cappell Historical Museum since February 2022. I manage their social media and Google page, help give tours of the park and help with anything they need. Events. Wilson House opening. In the spring of 2022, the Wilson House opened its doors to visitors. Big thanks to Janice Arthur and the late Pete Wilson for restoring the home. The house was built in 1945 and the family moved into the home in 1947. The house features the Wilson family's original furnishings, as well as other important pieces of Cappell history from that time. Every time visitors walk through the door, they're hit with a wave of nostalgia. They even comment that not only does it look like their parents', grandparents' or even great-grandparents' homes, but it smells like it too. I bring my record player and vinyls to highlight the music from that time period. Pioneer Day. Pioneer Day occurred October 15th, 2022. On this day, we gave tours of Heritage Park, had snow cones, vintage activities, a petting farm and a table set out by Cece's Pizza. In addition to all of this, the Minyard Store had the grand opening of its gift shop. We had over 300 people attend, including the Minyard Sisters and former Minyard's employees. Scar on the Square. The Cappell Historical Museum participated in Scar on the Square for the very first time October 29th, 2022. Children trick-or-treated in the Minyard Store. We had over 100 kids and their parents in the store with phenomenal costumes. Lighting up Heritage Park. This event took place on December 2nd, 2022. The Cappell Historical Museum kicked off the start of the holiday season with a big lighting party with holiday lights on all the buildings and fleet windmill. The Cappell Corel sang traditional holiday songs. Cliff and Chris Long both gave a speech and the Minyard Store opened and sold items from the gift shop. Vintage Christmas. Vintage Christmas took place December 3rd, 2022. Santa and Mrs. Claus were here to take pictures with anyone who stopped by, including Bijou Matthew. All the buildings were open, allowing guests to get a sneak peek of the Christmas decorations. Holidays in Heritage Park. On December 17th, 2022, the first holidays in Heritage Park took place after being postponed due to storms. Every building was covered in holiday decorations and the event was able to run smoothly thanks to our wonderful volunteers. The Infeld House truly shined during this event with cookies, cider, German Christmas music and the reading of a traditional poem in German. In the Wilson House, the aluminum tree and color wheel brought in the 1960s Christmas field. The Kirkland House featured Betsy Wilcox playing Christmas music on the piano. The store was busy selling amazing products. Junior Historian Program. From March 13th to 17th, 2023, the Cappell Junior Historian Program made its debut. Thanks to our amazing volunteers, we were able to open the whole week. Participants filled out a certain number of activities from the booklet depending on their age. When they completed it, they received a patch and a certificate. During the debut week, we had 20 participants. Three of them were teenagers from New Jersey who said the program was the highlight of their trip. We've also had participants after the debut week. More recently, we had a family from Massachusetts reach out and complete the program. The program is still available, so make sure to check it out. Bethel School Steps. Back in September 2022, the city moved a step and parted the foundation from the Bethel Schoolhouse to Heritage Park. The Bethel School was built in the late 1800s. The school was situated at the corner of present Bethel School and Moore Roads. In March 2023, the steps were landscaped around. The landscaping was paid by the Cappell Rotary Club, who continues to support the Cappell Historical Museum through other projects. Getting a permanent sign for the steps is currently in the works. One of the ways the Rotary Club is supporting us is by maintaining our flower beds. With the help of some scouts and other volunteers, they weeded out all of the beds, planted seeds and even laid down mulch. Hop in the Spring. The Easter Bunny hopped into the Minyard Store April 1st, 2023. Along with the Easter Bunny, we had egg dye, balloon animals, Easter eggs stuffed by the local diner, a booth set up by State Farm and goodies and lawn games from the block and roll trailer. We had close to 800 people that day. The kids loved every aspect of the event, especially the things from the block and roll trailer. We had families spend hours playing with the lawn games. Everyone had a big smile on their face that day. Mother's Day. Leading up to Mother's Day, themed cards with embroidered details were available. People could pick them up, write a message and send it to their loved one. Father's Day. On June 17th, the Cappell Historical Museum had its first Father's Day event. There were two vintage cars, a Ford Model A and a 64 Corvette, a card-making station, snow cones, State Farm set up a table, and we gave tours of the buildings at Heritage Park. The cars and the snow cones were an absolute hit. Families really enjoyed the event. We had over 80 people that day. Proclamation of Cappell, Ontario, Canada. Phil Byrge and his wife drove to Cappell, Ontario to meet with the locals there and also meet the people in a neighboring city called Hurst. Cappell, Ontario was settled by French Canadians and was named after George Cappell's son, Herbert, in 1914. While Cappell, Texas's railroad transported cotton, Cappell, Ontario's railroad transported lumber. Phil speaks French, so he was able to converse with the locals and learn more about the area. He took an official proclamation from Cappell, Texas, all the way to Cappell, Ontario. He and his wife were the first people from Cappell, Texas to go to Cappell, Ontario. Check out Phil's blog on our website documenting his trip. Independence Day at Heritage Park. On July 1st, 2023, we celebrated Independence Day. Around 106 people attended the event. A local singer, Roxy Cooper, sang the National Anthem. A local boy scout carried the U.S. flag. There was a reading of the Declaration of Independence. The buildings were decorated, there were snow cones. We gave tours of the buildings, had lawn games from the city's block and roll trailer, and we passed out some block and roll swag. The weather turned out to be pretty nice and overall, the day was a success. Storytime at Heritage Park. Throughout the summer, we have hosted a storytime. A historical book is read at each storytime, followed by an activity. Families are also able to tour the building the storytime is taking place in. The first one was hosted in the Kirkland House and was telephone-themed. The second one was in the Wilson House and was mid-century themed. And the third one was in the Infeld House and was themed around the indigenous people in Cappell and Texas. The final one is on July 26th at 10:00 a.m. in the Minyard Store. It'll be themed around the trains at Cappell. Construction. Museum and Park Maintenance. Over the past two months, the museum and the park has experienced some maintenance. The Kirkland and Infeld Houses got fresh coats of paint outside and the Infeld House got some necessary repairs. The park got a sprinkler control box and the sprinklers themselves are being installed. The Minyard Store got steps that lead from the sidewalk out front to the front door. This ensures the safety for all of our visitors that enter through the front door. Pete's Bench and the Pergola. Heritage Park will soon be home to a pergola. The pergola is being built by a scout for his Eagle Scout project and it will sit over the picnic table that's located between the Wilson and Infeld Houses. The scout is currently getting his project ready. We recently got a bench for the late Pete Wilson. Pete's bench backs up to the fence that surrounds the Wilson House garage and it faces the Bethel School steps. Getting this bench has been a tedious process, but worth it in the end. Social Media. Followers. On Instagram, we currently have 338 followers. We have gained over 140 followers over the past year. Due to unforeseen circumstances, we lost our original Facebook account. We currently have 30 followers on Facebook, but that's okay. With perseverance and time, we will be able to increase our numbers. Proof that not everything can be an album cover. Reels. Our first reel was the proof that not everything can be an album cover trend. It was uploaded February 11th, 2023. It has 1,156 plays, 22 likes, four shares, three saves and has reached 1,124 accounts, with 1,053 of them being non-followers. Our second reel was things coming in Heritage Park in the spring of 2022. Our second reel was Things Coming to Heritage Park in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. It was uploaded March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It has two hundred ninety-one plays and has reached two hundred forty-three accounts with a hundred fifty-five of them being non-followers. Our third reel was a Google Earth trend where you present a question about why a place is so hyped up and then show the reason why. It was uploaded March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It has three thousand one hundred forty-eight plays, two hundred nineteen likes, four comments, seventy-five shares, twenty-two saves, and has reached three thousand ninety accounts with two thousand nine hundred fifty of them being non-followers. This has been our most popular post ever. We gained a lot of followers thanks to this video. Upcoming Things. Visitor Center. The Minyard Store will soon be home to Coppell's Visitor Center. The design is still being crafted, but it will definitely feature brochures from Coppell's businesses and things that are a part of Coppell community experiences. While visitors are checking out the store, they will be able to shop Coppell-themed items like our Grapevine Springs body collection and ornaments. More recently, we have added Coppell-themed magnets. A person came in from Hawaii after seeing one of our posts on Instagram. They asked if we had any magnets, but at the time, we didn't. We have them now, and they have been a big hit. Summary. The Coppell Historical Museum has made lots of progress since the spring of two thousand and twenty-two. The museum has hosted fourteen events within the last year. The museum currently has three summer teenage interns in addition to a year-round teenage intern and an adult staff member. The museum is open for free tours four days a week. The museum is now home to four buildings within Gift Shop and Future Visitor Center. The community has been showing the museum tons of support, and the events have had great turnouts. The museum has more events planned, so keep an eye out. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Alyssa. I can't even remember what platform she's on, so that's not me, but that's all Alyssa and her parents, and thank you very much. We also gave you a handout that shows upcoming things that we're working on that haven't been finished yet but are in progress. So, the Historical Museum, in the nine months since we've actually made it a museum, has done amazing things. And we are currently working with the Texas Historical Commission on grants. We have a professional grant writer, even though it says "writer," R-I-D-E-R, on this page, that's helping us, you know, what can I tell you? That is helping us. I'm identifying a lot of the grants. Phil LaBerge, who works with us, is identifying grants. But we have a writer that's helping us try to get those grants. Fundraising is the grants. We also are going to start this year on our murder mystery series. We didn't have time last year. We're gonna do it this year. We know from a model out of East Texas that if we do it correctly, we can fund most of the museum with that particular, those events. We have a team of people working on those, and the reason that's important is the team is actually in the theater itself, so they know the theater and they know kind of how it works. We have also talked to a restaurant about doing the meal for that that's affordable. So I think, well, I know that that will start in the next year. We've also are working with several donors who have made, they're working on how much they would like to give us, but we know that we're gonna get something from them. And then we're also working on corporate donors, and we've been reaching out to them. So those are our fundraising. So that's what we're doing, and like I said, there's a lot of things on here. I mean, you can certainly read them. The one thing I'll mention, because you'll probably look at this and say, "What is it?" One of the things that happens in Old Town, as you know, is that everyone has an opinion about what's there and what's not there. We all know that from the meetings that have gone on. But one of the things that comes up a lot is there's no photo opportunities in Old Town. Now, keep in mind, since we started the museum, we've done fourteen events there, and we've got another six for the year, so that's a lot of events, more than once a month. We get a good turnout from Old Town, by the way. But one of the things they talk about is there's no photo opportunity. So we started brainstorming this, and there's two things we've come up with, and that's why you'll think this is strange, is we want a Surrey. And we want the Surrey to sit in front of the Kirkland House, because we know that the Kirklands took a Surrey to Grapevine to shop. That's how they got there. So in the process, we're kind of putting QR codes on most of things in the park, and they will talk. You know, you can do the QR code, and it will tell you about the history. We have some tapes of Mr. Kirkland, and so we're trying to find if there's anything in there we can use. If, you know, they tell me they can strip out the audios. I did not know that. They know that. The kids do. And so we're trying to find something so that when we finally find the Surrey, we can do a QR code on it, and it'll have his voice on it. Now, you might say, "Where do you get a Surrey?" Therein lies our issue. There's a bunch of Surrys, but they're all up north. I guess we didn't have any left over here in Texas, but Alyssa made a great comment that we could put it in a pod. So I'm trying to figure out how expensive it would be to put it in a pod and get it to Coppell. So that's still ongoing. The second thing is a Holstein cow. You might find that odd, but there were eleven dairies in Coppell, you know, before Coppell really became a city, and they were all up and down, Gene Marck's book, all up and down the Sandy Lake. And so we know that's a part of Coppell history. And so those are the two things that we're trying to do for photo opportunities, because the citizens of Old Town have been very vocal, to me at least, about the lack of photo opportunities in Old Town that are actually look old. So that's what that is on there. The other thing that just as a mention is the seed exchange is open. We have a seed exchange where we give usually young people, but we just give some to some adults, that they come in and we give them, at this point, we have Hollyhock seeds. Hollyhock seeds came in in the nineteenth century. They were used around outhouses, and they grow about nine feet tall. And the women wanted them there because they thought it was indelicate. We give them to the kids, and we tell them two things. One is that if they grow them, to send us a picture, and we will post it on our website. And the second one is, if they get any seeds, to please bring them back to us so they can become part of that program. And that is up and running thanks to our summer volunteers, our summer interns. So what else? Do you have any questions for me, or I'm sure you do?
Counsel, any questions?
No, that's not good.
Last time, I think in the beginning, when you talked about how long will it take for the the store to decide to be, or the museum to be self-provisioned, are we getting there?
Yes. I told you, I thought it would take two years.
Right.
This is the second year.
Right.
And this year, you know, the first year, we actually focused on the events and getting it rolling and getting people in there. But I've learned some things since last year, and here's one of the things I've learned. The reason I listed the fundraising is that my attitude has changed a little bit about that, because I originally thought we would have like memberships to the museum or that kind of stuff. But here's what I learned. When we did Hop Into Spring and we had, I think we had closer to, we had like five hundred children and their parents. It was just the darnedest thing you've ever seen. And they just kept coming. And by the way, without your block and roll trailer, we would have been in real trouble, because we had swag in the trailer. What I learned was this. I had a lady come up to me, don't know her, don't know who she is, but she lives in Coppell, because she told me that. She said she lived in Coppell, and she said, "I didn't know with inflation and all the things going on, how I was gonna afford to do anything for my kids for Easter. Thank you for doing this." Because we had all of it. We had the candy. We had the Easter at home. We had to take a picture with the Easter Bunny. We had balloon animals. We had, we had everything a kid could want for Easter. And what I've learned is that there's a section of Coppell that is coming to these events that I feel like we need to serve. All right? And I don't think memberships are the way to do that. I think the way to do that is the grants, the corporate donations, which are very viable, and we have some donors that are viable. So I would tell you into next year, the picture changes a lot based on what we're working on now. Now, I'll also say this. I think since we're doing twenty-plus events down in Old Town, that the city probably has some part in that, but not to the level we are now. You know what I'm saying? So, but yeah, we're getting there. We're getting there.
I've got a question. I'd like to direct toward Alyssa.
Sure.
On your postings that you did, what, you did three or four videos?
Three videos.
So you had a really large variation in likes and what looks and whatever else you guys call it. Why was there such a big difference in the engagement?
The two that did better were trends, so then algorithm pushes it out to more people, because it does, it's popular, the audio things. Well, one of them was one I came up with, and it wasn't a popular audio.
So what did you learn?
Use the trending audio.
And just so everybody knows, and I'm sure you know this, I don't know what any of that is. And so Alyssa comes in and says, "I think we should do trends," and I said, "I think that's great," and I don't know if that is, right? So all of the social media really is hers.
So do you have any more planned or scheduled or working on?
I need to come up with some more ideas. I don't know. There's not much trending right now for like businesses. Do you have any ideas?
I'll have to turn that over to our media expert right here. You know, I would, I would, I don't know. I'd just watch probably what's coming up in, in, you know, kind of the news cycle. Because I think that's gonna drive some of it. But first thing I was thinking of, you know, you've got college football starting up, and that's gonna be trending heavily.
The one thing I would like to add to that is that Alyssa also did the Junior Historian Program, and she wrote the script for that. And when, when kids come into the park, they go to each house and they find certain things. And then we talk to them about, "Oh, there's no bathroom in this house," or there's no, so we get to tell them things about the history. But Alyssa wrote that. She came up with the booklet. She drew the patch that we're, I mean, I made the patches, but she drew the patches. And so she has also done that, and honestly, that is very, very popular, and that was all her program. And Storytime is her program.
Counsel, any other questions for Chris or Alyssa? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your presentation.
No, thank you for your time.
All right, moving on. Item E is Friends of the Coppell Nature Park. Nancy Wilcox and Friends, I think.
What button do I push to make it go forward? Well, before I get started, I want to point out some very important people that are here tonight. I want to point out some of the original Friends of Coppell Nature Park from twenty years ago. Anita White, my husband, Chris Wilcox, and myself, Betsy Wilcox. And coming onto the board a little bit after that was Jane Clyde. Jane is our financial person, so if you have any questions, I care. And I also want to say that Dr. Linda Cook is the president of the Friends of Coppell Nature Park. If y'all don't know Dr. Cook, she was the science person for CIST for a long, long time, taught both of my girls. She was wonderful, and she was to have done this today, and she has COVID. So the doctor is not letting her come in. The doctor said, "You can't come tonight," and so I'm sure you're all worried about that. So anyway, I also want to point out some other important people that are here tonight, and they're our BEC people. So let's see. We have Cynthia, we have Caleb, and we have John. And these people are fabulous to wander around. We're volunteers. Friends of Coppell Nature Park are volunteers. And the first thing I want to say is, I cannot believe that it was twenty years ago that we came before this group to start our nature park, and the city of Coppell sponsored it. There was a little timeline before that, and I can answer any questions if you have any about that. And then ten years ago, ten years after we got started, we asked for the BEC, and once again, you came across. And I would have to say, this is one of the most successful programs that Coppell has ever had in anything that affected so many people, especially kids. So let's get started. Friends of Coppell Nature Park. Who's the friend, who are FCNP, and why do we matter to the city of Coppell? Well, here's the little timeline that I was telling you about. There were actually thirty-two acres that were donated by the Tross and the Tross and Judy's father and Judy in nineteen eighty-seven. You didn't know that. That was the land that's between Bethel School Road and Beltline. And that couldn't really be a really good nature park for a lot of reasons. I won't go into that. But back about, before we got started, there was something programmed here in Coppell, CIST, called Service Learning. And we had fun, and we were scaring much into that, and a lady named Pam Kreitz, who was one of the staff members at CIST, got that going. And that's, that was an important thing in an important time for CIST, because we were growing fast. And it gave the emphasis on what we can do for other people, how we can have service, and why that's so important. And we had this wonderful survey of kids from all different, well, not all little kids, but middle school and high school kids that went out and surveyed themselves and said, "What do we want? We want a nature park. Why do we want a nature park? What can we do in a nature park? Can we also, can we do things like water testing, all this, that, and the other?" And I want you to know that one of the kids that worked on that over twenty years ago is now on our Board of Directors. Her name is Tara Ferguson, and she is the future president of the Friends of Coppell Nature Park. So soon, you made a difference. Any questions about any of this? If you've been to the nature park, you know that the first thing that we did was to have, "Bring your board, build a deck." Y'all let us do that. And of course, we had to go back and redo it. Some people bought boards that weren't suitable, and we had little kids, you know, with nails and hair, but it was so much fun. And then after we did that, we decided we need some trails. Well, we have all these kids, these guys outside, out there that need Eagle projects. So our first trail was put in as an Eagle project, and we have a lot more than just that far from now. How many of you have been on a trail? Just raise your hand. Let me draw them. Okay, well, you need some opportunity for the rest of them. Any questions about this? Okay. I will tell you that this is not correct. We have more than two miles of trails. I think we have, what do we have, Cynthia, about five?
I measured that too. I measured that too.
Oh, you said, well, little always say we had like six or seven, but little are exaggerating. There are about five or six of us that have been real active from Coppell Nature Park who are master nationalists. If you don't know what a master nationalist is, I'm one, Cynthia's one, Dr. Cook is one, are you? No.
Uh, no.
Oh, get on the program. And we found in Texas Parks and Wildlife that the Coppell Nature Park is the largest park in Texas. It has three ecosystems. All right, what's an ecosystem? Well, cross timbers, you think about East Texas and the trees out there, okay. That's considered to be the cross timbers park of Texas. Roparian means stream or water. And then the prairie, the Blackland Prairie, we're on the edge of what the prairie wants here in Texas. So we actually have three aspects of those three ecosystems here in Texas, and I'm very proud of that. We have outdoor classrooms that were done by eagles. Observation deck, it's our first thing that we did. And we have all kinds of opportunities for groups in this town. Went too far. Sorry. I wanted to go backwards. This was done by Girl Scout troop. It's a bird observation blind. You can stand behind it and watch the birds feed. We had a young lady in high school came to us and said, "I'd like to make like some laminated map, laminated instructions for taking out a trail and you just put it back in the box." She made these. She made, I don't know, what, ten or twenty? One has insects, one has birds, one has trees. Excuse me. I can't remember the. We've had middle schoolers come in and identify trees and put signs up. Unfortunately, there was some vandalism on the first signs, but they came along later and did some others. Field Explorations. I can't tell you, in today's society, and everyone of you knows this, that kids do this all the time. All right? They have their phones. We want to pry those phones out of their cute little hands and introduce them to nature. There's nothing that bothers me quite as much as to have a kid that you're taking into the park that will say, "I'm afraid." Now, isn't that scary? Because I think there's therapeutic possibilities of taking a little kid out in the woods, letting him play in the creek, letting him listen to the birds. And that's what we do, a lot of it. We saw over nine thousand visitors in two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. Now, that was, I mean, there were more that I'm sure that didn't get counted, but that was part of COVID. And think about the opportunities that our park gave to people during that time, just to But that was part of COVID. And think about the opportunities that our park gave to people during that time, just to get out, safely out. That's Judy Tross Parsons, the person I mentioned earlier, who donated the acreage over there between Beltline and Bethel School Road. And that's me telling the kids to do something. We have field trips. We have field trips for public schools. We have field trips for home schools. We have field trips for private schools. And they just have to sign up and tell us what kind of program they want. And BEC gets together and they get the program going. And then Friends of Cappell Nature Park and the docents come and help them out. I remember one time we had an elementary school, I think there were 600 kids. This is before we had all our wonderful staff at the BEC. There were three people, Anita White, Betsy Walcox, and Lou Dugan. She took 200, I took 200, and Lou took 200. And we did it. And that's when we knew we needed some help. But the kids love it. This is a bridge that was done as an eagle project, by the way, and so with creek. And the engineering is perfect. Why? Because it doesn't have, um, uh, pillar piles. Pile pillars, you don't throw it around. Because if the water lifts it, it's okay. So just kind of get some good, strong guys to go in there and just put it right back. We have a lot of eagle projects for the park. We have community presentations. One of the most interesting ones was on mushrooms, and one was on nature therapy. We kind of have something for everybody at our park. Now, the Friends of Cappell Nature Park want to continue these and expand upon these, and we need your help. We need your help financially. Cappell Nature, Friends of Cappell Nature Park have never asked for money from this group before. But now the time has come that we need some, and we're going to explain that in just a minute. You think she's having a good time? We offer hikes every month, and in the summer, we offer hikes twice a month. All you have to do is go to the website, sign up for it, and then show up. Swear your water. Opportunities for service. This is, if you know, if you've got anybody in high school, you know that they have service things that they have to do. They have to have hours to put in. And we have places that they can put those hours in, maintaining our trails. This is one of the four places that we need your help. When we got started 20 years ago, we had a lot of shovels. We had a lot of rakes. We had a lot of wheelbarrows. And guess what? They don't last more than 20 years. So we do need a lot more equipment for that type of stuff. We have kids that come out there that are scouts. We have people, kids coming out there that need their hours. We have corporations that have service time, that they want to come out there. Now, here's where we get into our committees. And this was where, this is Linda's forte. I like to take the kids in the woods. I'm not administrator. But anyway, we have our education. We have our parks and trail maintenance that I just talked to you about. We have volunteerism, marketing and communications, and then bio diversity is the BEC. Now, this is where we expect to have some need for some financial aid here. Like I said, this is the first time we've ever come before this. Do you want to address some of this, or?
I'm the chair, but I also had him.
Well, she's the financial person, but here we go. Communication and marketing, we have website fees that we have to pay, social media, and sometimes we have newspaper advertisements. That's not a whole lot. Now, this is a big one, because we want to do the best for this community. We want to offer as many programs as we possibly can. And here's another one. We don't have a way to raise money, guys. We just don't. I mean, we have the North Texas Giving Day. Sometimes we've got a race. Sometimes we've had other things. But it's just gotten to be that we just can't do it. There's only, what, 15 or 20 of us? Are we not as young as we used to be? Education programs. Now, let's talk about this for a minute. We've got somebody at the back. John, you want to talk about that? Or not? Our, our Blackland Prairie, which is a little bit over an acre, is being invaded by privet. If you're a gardening person, you know what privet is. It's a nightmare. In fact, a lot of the park is being taken up or backed. We can't do it. We can't pull it up. We don't, we don't have the, the expertise to get rid of it chemically and getting rid of it physically. Well, I had physical therapy for six weeks because I tried to pull some up. But we need some help with our prairie restoration, some more plants, wildflowers, things of this nature, and in basic, getting rid of invasive species, and park maintenance, wheelbarrows, shovels, rakes. We keep them out in the little storage room. They're behind the soccer fields. So those are, this is how we need the money for, or we need the money for. Questions?
Council, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have membership?
We haven't done that. We haven't ever thought, we've been thinking about that.
Yep, that's been discussed.
I hate asking for money, so that is probably a hobby, but yes, so we, we have talked about that.
We talked about that, yeah. We had what we call a group of 300. 20 years ago, if you donated $1,000 or more, you had your name that's up on the wall there in the BEC. Well, that was what towards the BEC. We're the Friends, we're the Friends of Cappell Nature Park. Of course, you know, it's hard to say where one ends and the other one begins, but we're totally different. We, we made a commitment when we started 20 years ago to taking care of the trails. That's our commitment. City of Cappell didn't do that. That's another reason we have to have the insurance, I'm sure. So the Friends of Cappell Nature Park do the trails, BEC doesn't.
They give us the mulch, but.
Yeah, the city gives us the mulch. And we do the wheelbarrows. We take kids out there. We have one work day a month, weather permitting, on a Saturday. We usually have scouts. We have all ages.
Some of these items look like they were one-time expenses. Do you expect this to be an annual recurring request?
Uh, that depends on how well the, well, first of all, prairie recreation goes. That depends. Yes, we would probably have some of these expenses recurring, unless, probably less. Ask them.
Council, Mark?
Yes?
Do you have any plans on how you might grow the Friends of Cappell Nature Park?
Would you like to be on the board?
But I'd like to be. I could resign my role here, but I'm not ready. We're not quite ready to do that.
Well, then you're the air problem.
But I mean, do, do, do you have an advertising campaign of any type, or? Anyway, I know you've got your website, and so I'm wondering, maybe the city can put things, you know, on our, on our website to help promote that and, and grow the numbers. Because obviously, you can't do it just with a few people. There's just too much to be done. So if there's any way to, that we can assist.
Sure. Well, that's what you thought. There's, there's this thing about it though, and I'm thinking about the prairie. We need somebody professional to come in. That's why we're asking you for funds. I'm, I'm not comfortable with asking an 18-year-old to take something out and spray it. You know, you know what this is. Those of us that are master nationalists even have trouble sometimes identifying things that are out there.
Yeah.
So when you look at it from that standpoint, yeah, we would love to have some more people, but we, um, that's good.
We do have, I think it's a thousand followers on Facebook. And we are, as mentioned, we are taking a more serious look at probably starting a membership, if not for direct involvement that will be noted and provide some handles.
We have, we have a docent, we work with the docents, and you say that. The docents are through the BEC, the Bio Diversity Education Center. And I'm a docent also. And so we are the ones that volunteer with the little kids and take them out there and do all the stuff. We're the ones that are trying to do that. Cynthia gives us our, you know, papers. This is what you're going to do. This is what you're going to teach. That's the BEC. And we, as the nature park, are pretty much the trails, getting, getting rid of, I'm sorry.
We also do speakers on the ones that.
And it's, oh, yeah, we have wonderful programs. If you haven't been to some of those programs, they're just fantastic. One of my favorites was the rafters. Oh, my gosh, we had the rafters. And we went out to a little playground. Have you been out to the playground? If you haven't been to the playground, you need to take your kids or just go out there and look at it. So that's where we had a raptor park. Anybody else?
Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you so much for presenting for us today.
You're welcome.
What, what did you say was taking over the prairie area?
Yeah.
Privet.
Privet.
Privet. Do you have a privet hedge in front of your house?
So is, I, I want to make sure I had it right. So privet is poisonous?
No, it's invasive.
Invasive.
Invasive, okay. Said the leaves and areas of privet circles are poisonous to humans in most animals. I don't know if I have the right thing or not, so.
Is it poisonous?
That's what Google just told me. So.
Oh, yeah, let's get rid of it.
But this is, this is why I Googled it, because I, I wasn't, I'm not, I'm not familiar with it. So that's what my question really is, is if it's invasive and it is poisonous and dangerous to ingest, do you need more funds to get rid of it faster for?
Oh, yeah, we need more funds.
No, and, and I'm, I'm trying to understand is, was it $4,000 that you guys requested?
That we're starting with.
No, 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 for that, for that particular second. Can you go back to the?
Oh, sure.
1,500 or 1,600.
I couldn't remember what.
Like I said.
That's for the tool. There's tools.
This is for the removal, and this is for plants that are in a kind of.
Okay. And, and my question.
This is for the wheelbarrows and stuff.
My question really revolves around, is that enough funds, if this is something that is dangerous to the public, to, do we need to get rid of it faster, is, is what I'm trying to get to.
Okay. Let me say this, first of all. I'm not really sure about privet, but there are some plants that are male and female. And there's some plants that have berries and some that don't. The, the privet that I'm used to seeing doesn't have berries.
It's male or female.
It's male or female.
Okay.
And so I have privet hedge in front of my house and behind my house. Probably a lot of you did too, and you just don't even know it.
Okay.
But it's very hardy, and it's very hard to get rid of.
Okay.
Now, if it's poisonous, yeah, sure, that's something to be taken into consideration. We have a lot of poison ivy out there too, and we have poisonous snakes. It's nature.
Sure.
But we're trying to, we're trying to preserve this one acre, a little bit over an acre, as our prairie. So we can take kids out there and say, this is prairie grass. This has a root that's six times higher than the plant because of the water, because of the rain. And this is how the buffalo's ate it. And, you know, this just leads one thing to another, and the kids eat it up.
Thank you.
I guess.
May I add a comment?
I guess.
Yes, ma'am. You are always welcome.
This is kind of like you can feel that they will come. I mean, we started 20 years ago, and it's been wonderful with volunteers, with our, our board that we have. Like we have about 12 people on our board that are very committed. We do have some younger people that we recruited on the boards, some students. That has happened. But we're now at a point, like many things in this city, where we're a big city now. It, it just can't be maintained at the level that we even have it right now with just volunteers. And that's why we're coming before you for considerations. We did have a speaker that came out, and I was the, kind of the emcee that day, and I took him on a little tour afterwards, and he, he lives somewhere off in the area, and he just kept saying, I can't believe this is Cappell. I can't believe this is Cappell. This is, this is wonderful. This, you know, his comments to me kind of let me know that this park is not just Cappell Nature Park, it's Cappell Nature Park. It's really a nice nature park. And, but we're at that point where we need some assistance. And we've been, every committee has gone through what they want to do for next year. We have a, we have a plan that's written out. We've got our website. Of course, the new plan's been, was close to gen or not. But you can see that every committee has committed to what they will do with, with these funds.
Don?
Some of these things are certainly new. They're seven, at least $7,000. It's refreshing things and getting rid of the invasive species and things like that. But some of these things seem like they're already recurring. How are they getting funded today?
Yeah, you know, we have, we had quite a bit, we had quite a bit of reserve.
Okay, so just been spending out of reserves here for some time.
Lou Dugan was hard to say no to, and so he would, he somehow managed to. And we have lost Lou to San Antonio.
Right.
So, yeah.
Well, it would, it doesn't matter for this request certainly, because I think this request is perfectly natural and fine, but I don't think you would have any trouble at all getting memberships to an organization like this. I think people in this community would come out of the woodworks to contribute some, some amount. I, I don't think there would be any problem whatsoever with this community, so that's just a side note.
Some, some of these aren't going to be recurring.
The main one, yeah. Insurance is the one that's just ate us up.
Yeah.
And because it's a park.
Thank you, and we love our park. And we want, if you haven't been out there, you really need to come out there for a program or just go full on. Listen to the birds. Get dirty.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that is the last presentation from our service organization. Do we have any final comments or questions? We have another item on our agenda, but we are going to recess for about 10 minutes for a bio break. So we will come back into session at 7:55. for a bio break, so we will come back into session at seven fifty-five. So one of the things that we need to give, one of the things that we need to provide staff so that they can complete their budget is what we're, on page six of our worksheet, to fill in what we're, we see as a request from each one of the organizations and what we're willing to allocate in the budget. So let's just go down the list, um, I'm gonna start. Children's Advocacy Center asks for eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars.
Clarification point.
Yes.
Mayor, do, do we need to approve all of them or the fact that we didn't listen to presentations, are we just making an assumption that we automatically are approving that?
The ones that we don't listen to fit the criteria that there was no change or, or the previous, so yes, we will approve those automatically.
Thank you for that clarification.
So the only ones that we're considering are the ones that were, we have heard, and this is the only time we're doing this, is.
Yes, it is. I wanna be clear, because, um, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanna make sure. So what we just heard was that those that didn't present tonight, you're going ahead and going to have in the approved column, right? And then they're gonna go through, and I just wanna make sure that they are hearing it, because they're the ones that are tracking the numbers.
Okay, thank you. No, I think it's very important, I just wanted to make sure.
All the ones that did not present, you're going ahead and approving what they requested?
That's correct.
That's what I'm hearing, okay.
Because they fit the criteria that we have had established for when organizations are presenting. All right, so let's move through to this, Children's Advocacy Center asking for eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. Thumbs up?
Approved.
All right.
Approved.
Any, um, Capel Arts Council asking for twenty-seven thousand?
Okay.
Skip CCA.
I did. I did it on purpose so you could catch me.
It's like a season where we're successful.
Christian Community Action, twenty thousand, that is an increase of five thousand?
Yes.
Okay? Approved. And. So why is, okay, those are not there, that's not there. Capel Historical Society asking for ten thousand?
That one didn't present.
Oh.
It's a historical museum.
This was a museum that presented.
Correct.
And mayor clarification, the, the theater presented?
Well, they're part of the Arts Council.
So you're approving, but they all, they asked for sixty-five?
Sixty, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, they asked for sixty-five thousand.
And these are the breakdowns.
And that's the breakdown. Okay, so, okay, so let's just do it that, that way. Uh, Capel Community Corral is asking for thirteen thousand.
Yes.
Thumbs up there. The orchestra is down, forty-five hundred to thirteen-five.
Yes.
Okay, see thumbs up on that. Then the, I'm.
Theater.
The theater is asking for twelve thousand, thank you.
Mayor, just to, so I actually didn't even realize that this was the reallocation, so technically, they've already been getting money, it's just presented in a different way as a grant request.
It's been, it's been in our budget for years and we've been funding that, their storage facility, so yes, it is, it is, it's coming in out of another budget line item into this one.
Point of clarification, if I would have known that, I would not ask to even have seen their presentation, because that's just for the future, just noting that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So when, um, the ones that are arts related, that says they qualify for hot funding, what, is there like a percentage of the requests that's offset by the hot fund or?
So the hot fund allows for fifteen percent of hotel occupancy tax revenue to be used for the arts.
Mm-hmm.
And so we track how much you're allocating for the arts and these are fine to add to that.
Okay, so, so will the arts related ones that are in blue be funded entirely by the hot fund?
Correct.
Ah, thank you. Good clarification.
And, and just to clarify, for example, the theater is in green because it's new, but it would be hot, so it's more than just both?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we, so is this, are we considering the Historical Society and the museum?
Uh, two different.
Okay, so the Historical Society is asking for ten thousand, which is.
That's their normal.
Normal.
Operating like, yeah.
Thumbs up on that?
Yeah.
All right. And then the museum is asking for a hundred and seventeen thousand.
They said two years.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're doing it for two years.
All right, and then last, I think lastly, is the Friends of the Capel Nature Park asking for fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Kim, does that qualify for hot?
Which, which one?
The nature park.
Friends of the nature park, no.
You can't.
We can tie to the tourism.
I'm sorry. It's not an attraction or anything, but.
No, it's part of the park.
All right, so, um, the only one that is not gonna be. Okay, the question, did, was the ballet ensemble not invited or what was it?
No, so with the Arts Council, y'all didn't invite actually just the Capel Community Theater or the Capel Corral.
Correct, because the ballet was ten thousand and you typically only look at something that's over ten thousand. I mean, what I recall from the workshop.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, so.
That's why they weren't invited.
Are we good?
But I thought that if they haven't applied, or if it was an increase, that we actually do.
The, the folks who presented tonight were who y'all said you wanted to present.
That's including the.
That, right.
The ensemble.
Right.
If I, if I remember the context of the conversation, it was like they had previously requested seventy-five hundred, there was that one year where they had zero, and then they just bumped it to twenty-five hundred above what they had asked for, so I felt like that's where we arranged.
I think we passed on it.
Yeah, exactly, because historically they had asked for seventy-five hundred, so.
Yeah, okay.
Believe that's what I remember.
So you approved everything?
Yes, well, the assistant, did it present too?
So we will incorporate that into the appropriate.
Was it because it's under ten thousand or something?
No, because they had only requested a twenty-five hundred increase, so we, we, at that workshop, we, we declined to have them present it, is the consensus we came to.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
So do we ask these organizations to track who's coming by the city they live in? I mean, would that, would that help us to tie it into the tourism aspect of the hot fund if, if a certain percentage of visitors were from outside of Capel?
The tracking, they track only total attendance, they don't track who came from what zip code.
But would there be an advantage in trying to tie it into hot funding for tourism if we had them collect that metric?
If they had the mechanism to be able to do that, I don't know that they do, we've not asked them for that.
Might be interesting.
The answer is, we can ask for that, they might have the physical ability to capture.
Right, right.
If you ask us fifteen thousand dollars for computer systems. Right back at the same spot.
Don't be so logical.
So, so yes, everything's approved, all right, submitted?
Yes.
What's that? That's requested, thank you. All right, let's move on, item number four, presentation discussion regarding special revenue funds. I thought I had walked most of the nature park, but after looking at the map, it's clear that I had missed part of it, the majority of it.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we will highlight the major special revenue funds, which include hotel occupancy tax, also known as HOD, Municipal Drainage Utility District, or DOD, Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, IMF, Rowley Noakes Memorial Cemetery, ROMC, Crime Control and Prevention District, CCPD, and last but not least, the Capel Recreation Development Corporation, also known as CRVC. Please reference the material provided to you in your council packet with summaries of all the special revenue funds, specifically the ones we will cover tonight are located in pages eight through twenty-eight. As you recall from the Budget 101 presentation provided by Kim on Tuesday, special revenue funds are used to record the proceeds from special revenues, revenue sources restricted for a specific purpose. A common theme you will see tonight is an annual adjustment to the salary and benefits. However, more will be discussed on next Tuesday's budget workshop, when we will cover the General Fund and Depth Service Fund. Now let's begin with the hotel occupancy. And you may reference pages eight tonight for this fund. For fiscal year twenty-four, the hot revenue is four hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five, and total expenditures are three hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen. Revenue is based on four open hotels in addition to revenue from nine short-term rentals. The economic development line is the amount rebated to hotels for building in Capel. This amount is based on four open hotels, of which two receive contracted rebated amounts. Expenditures in this account are for salary and benefits for two full-time equivalent art center marketing positions, totaling a hundred and eighty-three thousand fourteen. Additionally, service organizations that meet the criteria for hot funding, the criteria is based on tax code section three fifty-one, one oh one, use of tax revenue to promote tourism in the convention and hotel industry. It is limited to the uses outlined in the section, and we currently see Capel Arts Council, Capel Community Corral, Capel Community Orchestra, Capel Community Theater, and Capel Historical Society that could potentially use this fund in the amount of two hundred and two thousand five hundred. Of course, this number can change based on your direction this evening. At this time, do you have any questions about the hot fund?
Do we know what percentage of the collected revenues for last year were paid by people that live outside of Capel?
I don't, I don't think that we have that data.
We don't, and I'm not even sure that we, again, that's asking the hotels to capture that information.
Right.
The state doesn't report that.
It's just a, it's just a collection, right?
I, I have a question. I heard you saying nine short-term rental houses. Last time I heard the presentation, we had thirteen houses.
Correct, so nine is the ones that we're currently receiving revenue from, the other are not, we're not currently receiving revenue from.
Okay, so they were approved recently?
I don't have the exact time, I can definitely get that for you, but the information provided is that thirteen is the total amount that we have, that nine would be the ones that we actually are receiving revenue from.
So just a procedural question, why is the economic development shown as a negative revenue and not an expense?
The economic development line is not an expense. This is the amount rebated to hotels after sales tax is received by the city, and after it's reviewed and audited. Not sure if that answers.
Not really.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's an accounting.
But can we just, I have to share what we're giggling about, Mayor. We did a run-through today, and Jerry sat in your seat and played mayor, and he asked that question.
Are you gonna be competing this year?
It's hilarious.
The people know.
Well, then, then you didn't take him seriously enough.
Now, we actually planned Vanessa to also.
So it's not truly an expense. It's just a refunding of what they've already paid. Because technically, we could say, you paid in a hundred, your rebate is twenty, and you just give us eighty. But instead, we choose to put it in a separate line item, so we can specifically see what we're rebating back versus what we're getting in.
Okay, so now, I, I have a question for Councilmember Carol. Was that question, I was expecting that to come out of you, not me, so was that too elementary?
So we bring.
I, uh, you know, it was not too elementary.
It was rhetorical. You don't have to.
Gonna stay out of the hole.
Okay, so, so in other words, we're gonna add a hundred thousand dollars in our, in our hot fund this year.
That's what we are estimating.
Okay, I wanna make one thing really clear. The Discover Capel is not included in this as of yet.
Oh, correct.
Because we don't, we don't know where you are on that, so we did not include it. But the way the budget works, as far as the, so let's just say, the expenditures, you include the Discover Capel, the expenditures will exceed the revenues for the year. But remember, we've been collecting the hot tax over time, so it's been building up this fund balance, and they do an allocation. And remember that no less than fifteen percent, it's actually fourteen point blah blah blah, but no less than fifteen percent has to be spent on advertising and marketing. And so, the difference will come out of the fund balance. And this coming year, when we did the five-year forecast, this coming year is the last year, if we call it, of Discover Capel being identified as a potential expenditure. So in twenty-four, twenty-five's budget, depending on what y'all decide to do, I don't wanna get too far out here, but twenty-four, twenty-five budget will still be in the same negative if you decide to fund it. But in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we're back in the flat. So, it's just these next two years. This one, for sure, has the potential to be in the red if you fund Discover Capel. Next year has that potential as well, but we don't know that until we get into projections. Point of clarification, because we have fund balance, we cover that over the next two years. But then we have revenues that are...
Exceeding expenditure.
Exceeding expenditures because of rebates expiring, additional hotels.
And additional hotel.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Jim?
So on the economic development line item, is that the value of inducements that we've given to the hotels for locating there?
It's their, yes, it's the economic development agreements, the rebates that we give them back.
Okay, so do those expire also then at some point?
They do, and, and the percent that they are rebated starts to decline over the years also.
Okay, okay, and then are we giving the same kind of inducements to the new hotels coming online?
That's completely up to, to you.
So, so far, there is, you know, it's come back to council a couple of times because a couple of them have been prolonged, and the council has said it was from that particular date, so they're already lopping off years of their potential if they come online. And then there are other hotels that there are no inducements at all.
Thank you very much.
To quantify that, those decisions are the councils, and specifically up to this council?
I'm good with that.
All right.
The next one we're covering is the Municipal Drainage Utility District, DOD. Please reference page ten in your packet. DOD is a special revenue fund restricted for stormwater control development. The fiscal year twenty-four proposed revenues are approximately two-point-two million, and total expenditures are one-point-six million. Stormwater revenue is based on the rate study conducted in twenty-nineteen, and revenues come from standard fee on residential utility bills, and a sliding scale for commercial utility bills. Expenditures, the first line, salary and benefits, is based on annual adjustments. Supplies has stayed flat. Maintenance has slightly increased. Services increased by three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand six hundred from prior year because of the Northlake Woodland Drainage Study, Storm Sewer Analysis, Hunterwood Park, and Outfall Repair Design. Capital Outlay consists of the Hunterwood Park Bank Civilization Construction and Asbury Manor Improvement Construction. There will be no transfer, transfer outs this year. At this time, is there any questions over this fund?
I'm sorry, I was trying to think of the question.
You were hard.
Yeah, I was. I was, I was formulating.
Sorry, I just missed it. The capital outlay, why is it down? What, are there just not as many projects going on? Is that what it is, just? It's like gonna be seven hundred this year versus what, one eight or something? Just not as many projects, just generically?
Correct, yeah. That, that number is gonna fluctuate up and down depending on what they have planned.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Did the, what I was trying to get the question out, and I couldn't quite get it, was all the work that we did on the ISS for that storm, or for the sewer line that was in the creek that was leaking, that we were incurring a significant amount of cost?
Goodness, yeah, that was water sewer fund.
That was water sewer fund.
Was that water sewer fund?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
The next one we'll be covering is the IMF one. Please reference page twenty-three in your packet.
Page what?
Page twenty-three.
Twenty-three. I'm, I'm really having trouble hearing you down here.
I'll try to be loud. Total proposed revenues for fiscal year twenty-four are approximately six-point-five million, and total expenditures are four-five-point-eight million. Revenues come from a voter-approved quarter cent sales tax and transfers from the General Fund. Transfer ins come from facilities at one-point-two, streets at one-point-six, and traffic one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, for a total of three-million-sixty-six-thousand. For expenditures, salaries make up twenty-five percent of a construction inspector's salary. Maintenance includes facilities, streets, and traffic projects. Services include the administrative services fees in the amount of a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four, which is based on the cost allocation study that allocates an amount for each fund that uses services rendered from the General Fund, in addition to about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for construction design services for Woodhill and Woodhaven. Capital Outlay is approximately two, two-point-five million, which includes amounts budgeted for street maintenance and repairs for the reconstruction of Bullock and Howe. At this time, do you have any questions for this fund?
When was this, uh, when was this fund at last approved by the voters?
I have that, it was approved in... Just in November.
November of last year.
Crime Control and IMF were both part of the election in November.
Okay, and this one will be up in twenty-twenty-seven?
It lasts for ten years.
It's a ten year.
Ten years.
IMF?
No, IMF.
It, it's four years.
It's only four years.
So, we'll have two more sessions. That's how I look at life. To try to get it, to try to get it extended.
So, so that we're not talking in circles, this is the one that we've been petitioning the legislature to extend to a ten-year cycle.
Correct, and we took, we took the vote this year, actually a year early. And it didn't knock us back four years. It just, it adds it on to, that's the reason why we have two more sessions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions on, on IMF? Kevin?
The capital outlay of the two-point-five million for Bullock and Howe, is that, is that the scope of the entire project coming out of this? Okay, excellent, thank you.
All right, just, just real quick, this is neither here nor there, but I'm curious. The, the maintenance line is so much less than what we pay, what, what we actually expended in the current fiscal year. Is there anything specific why that's so much less? Is there one project or any?
So, I mean, it, it is based on what projects they're bringing forward. If you're looking at, are you looking at the amended line, or are you looking at the adopted? The three-point-three, are you referring to compared to the two-point-nine, or the six-point?
I guess either one of them, but yeah, for sure, the six-point.
So the six-point-two, they started some projects in twenty-twenty-two, and they didn't complete them, and those POs went over, and we're finishing in it in the following year.
Okay, so it's really not that much less than what was planned. Okay, all right, thanks.
If you take a look at the net for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, it's significantly higher, so it just, the funds were deferred.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
The next one we'll cover is RMC, Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery. If you can reference pages twenty-four and twenty-five. Fiscal year twenty-four revenues total are approximately two-point-one million, and total expenditures are two-point-three million. Revenues come from the sale of burial rights, lest, lest the fifteen percent required to fund the Perpetual Care Fund. Burial rights depend on what we have remaining at the end of this year in inventory. For expenditures, salaries are based on annual adjustments. Supplies has increased for fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget due to increased costs for cemetery memorial items. Maintenance has stayed flat, while services has gone up slightly because of inflationary impacts on other services, such as installation, leveling services of cemetery items and burial services. The transfer out in this general fund is to general fund for repayment of the cemetery expansion and subsidy. Overall increases in expenditures are due to inflation on items such as granite. The, the ROMC is currently doing an analysis on the changes and its impact on fee structure, and will bring forth those changes in a budget amendment in fiscal year twenty-four. At this time, do you have any questions over the cemetery?
So when they bring forth their suggestions on changes of fees, is that gonna be every fee, or are they just focusing on a few? Does it, it looks like the expenses have significantly gone up.
Yeah, the, it, the, when the presentation comes on the fees, it, it is across the board. It is not just to anyone particular.
Okay, thank you. Don?
He just inhaled.
I wanted to hear.
How does this work long-term? I mean, well, eventually, we, don't we run out of?
That's the purpose of the fifteen percent. Does that actually cover the full cost?
No. Said, I was just curious if this was a trend. I mean, we've been, you know, better to break even, but are we turning the corner on not as many sales?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're not there yet. We have multiple phases still to go.
You're telling me not to worry about it for now, huh?
Well, no, it's a good concern, because that's where the fifteen percent.
Long-term eventually, and I know the fifteen percent is not in doubt, but something.
Right, there, I mean, those revenues, over time, will eventually reduce because you'll have less spaces to sell.
Okay.
Well, and I, I think the important for this is the expenditures, as she said, reflect the inflation that we're seeing, but the fees haven't been adjusted.
Yeah.
So the revenue hasn't been adjusted to cover those increased costs.
Are the, is this fee study happening right now? Is that right?
They're taking a look at it.
And so, well, I guess they might implement, they might actually adjust this, right?
And, and that's the plan, is to come back to you in a budget amendment to, to adjust what we think those revenues are gonna be, based on new fees.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, and then Vijay?
So my question was about the, the fifteen percent. Is that noted on here anywhere? Because I know, I know it says in the summary here that it's less the fifteen percent required for the Perpetual Care Fund. Is that noted in this?
So the question was, the Perpetual Care Fund, I know it shows up in our cap or...
Right, and it, it's not a budgeted fund, because it's, it's a trust fund.
Yes.
So that's why it doesn't show. So it really only has assets and liabilities.
But you don't show, you don't show the transfer, or that, that, that minus fifteen percent on this particular fund?
No, we, when we record it, we record the fifteen percent here and the eighty-five percent.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, so we're basically, yeah, we're basically just seeing eighty-five percent in the, like, in the sales, like, in the revenue on this, okay.
Oh, thank you. I did not, I didn't catch on to that. Vijay?
Yeah, you mentioned the granite cost went up, but the granite cost is covered by the family members, right?
So, so they, yes, it is, when we charge them to, for that cost.
Right.
So we've adjusted the cost here, but we have a price sheet that now they're going back and looking at that price sheet, because you don't charge them just the amount that we're, there, there's a markup, right?
Yeah, there's a markup, right?
Because we have fixed costs that we're trying to do.
It's not a variable mark, it's not a variable fee structure. As the granite goes up, we don't, we don't change our fees.
Right.
Right, it's not like going to the gas station and the price of a gallon changes. We have a fee structure that we have to adopt. Does that make sense?
What the?
What?
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The granite cost.
It costs more.
But the family covers that.
Not right now, because we haven't adjusted our fees. It is, are they supposed to? Yes, that's the way the structure is supposed to work. That means we have to adjust our fees. Our fees haven't been adjusted. Our published fees.
So when was the last time we?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
It's.
Been a few years.
Yes.
It's been more than a few years. I remember the discussion, I'm guessing it was in twenty-seventeen, maybe? Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
I need to get my plot pretty fast.
Well, no, just, no, it's not, it's the plot that's not the problem. It's the granite cost, and that's, means something else happened.
Yeah. Pre-bi, pre-bi. The rocks are going up, I mean, even, even putting the grounds would have cost more.
Jim, you have a question?
No, no, that was, I'm just thinking.
Kind, it's a, kind of a follow-up on what Vijay was asking, but, you know, I know he asked like the last time it was checked, but do you know how often the city does look at that price?
On the cost recovery? Well, we do cost recovery, like in Parks and Recreation, we've talked about that. We do that across the board. It just hasn't been done at the cemetery. The last time we concentrated on the cemetery was when y'all just made some decisions on the sale of those spaces.
Okay.
Right?
I just, I wasn't sure how.
That was, that was the last major time we had a discussion about anything out there.
The three days.
Yes, and so, and this phenomenon of this last year or so, these recent increase in cost, that's when it, that's when it came to our attention. It's like, okay, now our costs are starting to exceed what our fees are, so we've got to adjust our fees.
Do you do any? In, yeah, inflation and all this crazy stuff, and cost of goods and...
Yeah, we weren't seeing the, the inflationary cost in twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty, so there was.
Really no need to really look at it as close.
The fees were covering, right, the fees were covering the, the cost.
So it's coming before us probably this?
Probably February, January, February. I think that's a typical time.
Do you recall from our discussions with Jessica, the time, I know that they're working on it. They're doing surveys. They're gonna enlist somebody to help them with it, so, and they're, that's what they're focused on right now. The master.
I'm not trying to guess that.
And I guess I'll just add, you know, Tuesday night, Mike talked about the increasing cost of services and, and goods.
Absolutely.
I think you'll see these types of discussions coming in, in virtually every department over the next year or so. All right, okay, let's go on.
The next one we'll cover is CCPD. The Crime Prevention District Special Revenue, Special Revenue Fund can be located in pages twenty-six and twenty-seven of your packet. CCPD is a fund restricted to crime prevention programs and services. Revenues come primarily from a voter-approved quarter cent sales tax. Proposed revenues for fiscal year twenty-four are approximately three-point-eight million. Proposed revenues for fiscal year '24 are approximately 3.8 million. A 5% increase in sales tax revenue from fiscal year '24 proposed budget compared to fiscal year '23 adopted budget. The remaining revenue is provided by salary reimbursements from the Capel Independent School District for the School Resource Officers Program and interest earnings. Expenditures are approximately 3.3 million. Salary and benefit funds, seven positions related to the School Resource Officer Program. Supplies are approximately 227,000, an increase due to the cost to replace ALPR Automatic License Plate Reader Cameras and the cost to update the interview room. Both were discussed during the town hall meeting in April. Services has decreased because in fiscal year '23, adopted budget included funds for the CCPD election regarding the continuation of the quarter cent sales tax. In addition, the amount charged by Grapevine to use their jail services is less than the contract we had with the City of Carrollton. The transfer category has an increase to the capital replacement fund for six vehicles. At this time, is there any questions for CCPD?
I... Before you... Okay. So, in the... What bumped the amended budget in '23?
Or is there a specific line item that you're looking at?
The sales tax.
Oh, the rule hasn't went into effect. The rule...
Oh, okay. Gee, how did I forget that one?
Basically, the actual is correct.
Right. Remember, we budgeted as a 334.
Yep.
It was in effect and we amend accordingly. My comment was going to be, when you had the hearing and discussed the budget and recommended approval of the budget for the Crime Control District, at the time, CSD, particularly Superintendent Hunt, was still trying to evaluate the impact of HB3 with his own operation. He subsequently reached out to Chief Barton and myself. So, we have a meeting next week, I believe, and this is one of those unfunded mandate situations where the city is basically gonna be asked to step in. He's... Right now, the superintendent is looking... There's a need. I don't know how to say it. There's a requirement by HB3 that there has to be a armed security officer at every school in the district.
Every campus.
Every campus. And that goes into effect basically with the start of the new school year. Forgetting the logistics of how you do that, given that he just signed the bill, you know, at the end of May or sometime, we are looking at options with the school district on how to make that happen with the school district, you know, picking up their fair share. I call it fair share. If we have full-time officers or if we have officers who only cover the school year or if we have officers who are working overtime. If the school district chooses or says to us that they want to have an SRO because they do have the option of not using a police officer or an SRO. So, I only say that to you because it's possible that come August, when we're going through the budget approval process, that there may be some changes to the Crime Control District as presented. So...
Go ahead.
I just... Definitely, you know, I think that's the tough spot right here because obviously we see, you know, a $3 million increase in that, but that's because no rule has gone into effect, you know. So, you know, we see that in the, you know, in the fund balance, right? So, I think that's the hard part is the long-term trying, you know, continue to support that if that revenue source is cut off from us, right?
From an operational standpoint, I'm gonna use this term because it's my turn, nobody else's. We have some free board in operations in terms of our expenses versus revenues as if the rule's in place. The challenge is going to be over time. If that's where these folks are supposed to be funded out of...
Yes.
I know costs are gonna go up at INTECH. I know costs are gonna go up over at, you know, the Grapevine Jail. I mean, we know these costs are going to increase. Now, supposedly, out there, there are, according to the HB3, there are state and federal grants and private monies that can be used for this purpose.
Where's the problem?
Well, I've actually asked the... Our state representatives, since they apparently passed a bill, they must have known what these were. So far, they don't have an answer. Surprise. But they're getting and collecting that information. And I believe the mayor was visiting with the senator and he identified apparently that there are funds out there as well that are available to the school district to offset these costs.
And that we should know about them.
Yeah.
But they couldn't give us...
No.
This right offhand, they couldn't tell us where to go get those funds?
No.
Oh.
So, HB3, just... I don't know if you followed all of it. One of the... It does cover school security and as Mike said, it requires an armed person. Doesn't have to be a police officer at every campus. So, that's gonna impact CISD to the tune of about eight people.
That's within Capel proper. They have to work out their situation.
The sheriff.
Oh, and sheriff and urban campuses and stuff?
So, we're looking at covering half of the cost of the additional eight people.
Basically, funding four?
No, it means, well, if you wanna view it that way.
If it's, you know, if it's all year versus maybe the school year?
You know, they're not on school property for four years, so... It's probably like three instead of four.
Oh, yeah. Makes sense.
But then, how do you do that? Do you find somebody, I mean, go out to store during the winter?
Well, the reason why we talk about the logistics of making it happen, first of all, you have to capital equipment, right? You're talking about all that. And just imagine, every school district in the state of Texas has got this mandate and there's already a shortage of police officers. And so, it's just gonna be a bugaboo to get it worked out.
What did the school board president tell us? That Plano needed 40-something and the ISD needs...
400.
400 or something? So, even if you had the funding, where do you find them? Right. Before September? Right.
The senator that I talked to said, "Well, the start date of September is soft. It's not a firm requirement." Anyway.
But it's a law.
Yeah.
It's a law.
Yeah.
And tell that to the parents.
Exactly. And then, the other question is, the law does not say that it has to be a sworn police officer, but the question comes up, you feel comfortable having Billy Bob carrying his 45 in a school? But, you know, even though he's licensed to carry and all that stuff? So, that's something Dr. Hunt will have to work out. Yep.
And are they looking at having citizens on patrol, volunteer and do something?
They can occupy a gun.
They can?
They would have to become an employee of the school district and then get certified to do that. So, that's the way that they could do that. And then, the school district would be responsible, not us.
And from a funding standpoint, when I talked about it, kind of unfunded mandate, just to put it in perspective, apparently what the state did is they gave the school districts $15,000 per school and $10 per student. So, somehow, that's supposed to cover...
They won't even buy a box of ammo.
Right. But that's how... But that's how the state... They're very proud to sign that bill.
Uh-huh, I'm sure they were.
All right. So, we bashed HB3 enough. Any... We haven't really... There's some really good parts to HBC3, so we shouldn't be negative on it, but this one is gonna create some challenges for CISD and the city. And so, just be aware, like Mike was saying, that we've got some, you know, we've got some changes coming. Mark, do you have a comment?
He's just showing self-control right now.
I can learn from you.
All right. Let's move on.
So, the last one is gonna be CRDC, which you... So, the next one will be CRDC, which you can find in page 28. Okay, so for fiscal year '24, total revenue is approximately 4.3 million and total expenditures are 4.3. Revenues of the first one, sales tax, is the largest contributor to the revenues for CRDC fund. Sales tax for CRDC is half a cent and is authorized by voters. The Art Center also provides revenue to this fund from fees. The CRDC debt service portion listed separately on page 29 is restricted to paying for the principal and interest on the city's CRDC debt. The amount shown is transferred to the CRDC debt service fund to make the principal and interest due on the bond. Revenues match the expenditures. CRDC's special revenue fund expenditures are the following. The first line, salary and benefits, has increased to include the funding 11 full-time equivalent staff positions and 10 part-time, non-benefit staff positions and has been updated to reflect those numbers plus a merit increase for fiscal year '24. Supplies has lowered from fiscal year '22 actuals and fiscal year '23 adopted because of the cost of purchasing required items to open the Art Center. Now that it is open, the supply needs have stabilized. Maintenance has decreased due to the swimming pool maintenance costs, a one-time cost for fiscal year '23 and not needed in fiscal year '24. Services has decreased slightly. Capital outlay consists of packages and projects associated with the parks and the Art Center. Lastly, we will again not see the 35% of sales tax transferred to the general fund this year. At this time, is there any questions for this fund?
Did you ask the same question on this one?
We'll see.
Yeah, let's find out.
What's that?
Let's find out.
So, I... Why is the debt service not seen as an expense and...
So, that's really just for presentation purposes. We could show you just what's being allocated to the special revenue and then put in the debt service that portion, but we want you to see this is the total amount that that half cent is bringing in easily, more transparent, and then move that out. Because when we receive the sales tax, we automatically record the portion that's related to debt service in that fund and then the portion that's related to the special revenue fund in its fund. So, this was strictly presentation.
Okay, and I was... I didn't... I was trying to follow the... When you said the revenue or expenses for the... Expenses for the Art Center had stabilized. I wasn't seeing where that was coming from.
That's for the line for supplies.
Okay.
Yeah, for supplies for fiscal year... If you notice, for adopted fiscal year '23 compared to fiscal year '24 proposed.
Okay, I see. I was looking for bigger numbers than that, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Jim?
On the Art Center revenue, is that... Is the 655-800, is that a hard estimate? Is that based on actual season ticket sales or...
That's an estimate from Janine, and it's based on looking at the... Having the additional staff and kind of what they plan to be able to do with that additional staff and kind of phasing it in, knowing that you have the marketing crew, but it's gonna take time for them to... For you to see the results, right?
Okay.
Of the efforts. So, she has a five-year forecast that she's projected out where she thinks revenues are gonna get.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Don's good, so I guess we're okay.
Thumbs up?
And that's the last... That was the last one.
All right, well, thank you very much. Anybody have any final questions for the special revenue funds? Again, thanks for the excitement. Item number five is citizens' appearance. Sir, do we have anybody signed up to speak? I will forego the verbiage on that. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we're adjourned at 8:44 PM.